Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Recall Gavin 2020 Town Hall. My name is Tim Holliday, part of Recall Gavin 2020. We have some wonderful guests tonight. Both Mike and Orin are on the road, but they will be joining us shortly. We have Ms. Lovely Susan Heard. We have Dave Gilliard as joining us, and we have a surprise guest. The man who used to have a mustache, but I'm not going to say who it is right now. I think both him and Orin are swapping positions here with the mustache.
That's a cliffhanger right there. That's a cliffhanger. People have to stay tuned to find out.
Hey, Orin, why don't you let me say hi? Since I'm already, I'm on the road again. Sam is right. This week, we're in Santa Cruz and Monterey, spreading the word about the recall, and I went from the streets of Solvain to pine trees today. And just another reminder of really what a beautiful state California is, I travel throughout it, and how it's worth saving. And for everybody out there looks around some days, and I know a lot of you go, I might move somewhere else. I might go to Tennessee, where there's humidity. I would go to Arizona, where there's rocks. Just a reminder, if you look around, why California is so beautiful, so wonderful, and worth saving, because it's still a great state. Orin, I'm going to toss it back to you before I've only got a couple of minutes tonight before we start another meeting, if you will.
Absolutely. And Mike and I are, you know, we have traveled the state together, and just yesterday, we were down in Orange County, and today we're up here in beautiful Santa Cruz County. We're both in Santa Cruz County, but he is probably 50 miles from where I am today, and it was not a planned event for us to be so close together, but yet so far apart.
How come I can't get rid of you, Orin?
Airplanes, cars, trains, you know.
We went from Orange County and speaking in front of a crowd of 300 people. I traveled by plane this morning, and I still end up within 50 miles of you.
It's just the way it is, Mike. You know what? The state just keeps bringing us, the people of California, closer and closer and closer together. It wants to heal. It's just like, you know, it wants to heal itself, and we are the medicine that is going to bring the the Band-Aid that's going to heal the state and make it a better place to live.
And I want to tell everybody, we're going to some amazing events. There's another amazing one in Culver City at 10 o'clock that I'm going to be speaking at along with Roxanne Hoag, along with Angela Marston, this Saturday morning, right after our radio show, which is Friday night. And really, as I go and hear the energy and real quick before.
After the radio show.
Well, this is Saturday morning after the radio show. But what's really interesting, Orin, what the movement, as I call it, the recall has done. We were at Sonia Green's movement, and literally a year ago, she probably said she had 20, 30 people at one of these meetings. There were over 300. At the meeting I was at a couple of days before on a Saturday night for the Spanish community. A year ago, they probably had 10, 15. It was 150. So what Recall Gavin is doing is bringing the state together, and you're seeing this continuously grow. It's fascinating. I want everybody out there tonight to have a great and fantastic time on our town hall. Tim has lined up some really special guests with some special announcements tonight. Please tune in for Friday night's the French Laundry. And everybody out there, God bless. I'm going to sign off and get in there. Orin, do you want to add anything before I leave? Or are you still following me?
I'm still following you around. But you know what, folks? Mike is absolutely right. We have some great guests tonight. I know my video died because I'm in a sketchy area as far as the internet is concerned down here in Santa Cruz County. But I want to just turn it over to Tim. Tim, my friend, go ahead and introduce our guest. God bless everybody, and my video, I'm hoping, will come back online in shortly.
Well, for those of you that were able to join us for our pregame show, there were some numbers being talked, and now we have Mr. Dave Gilliard, who is going to be talking more about some numbers, some recent polls. Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Tim, and thank you, everyone. And it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Tim, could you put up the first slide, please?
Give me just a moment. I got to get this prepped.
Okay. While Tim's doing that, there have been some recent polls which have all indicated that we are very close to being able to recall this governor. And the numbers, in fact, are extremely encouraging, and I want to go through those here in a minute and explain how they were done. Two of the polls were done by media organizations. Are paid for by media organizations. The other poll was paid for by our own committee, which is Rescue California. And they all pretty much confirm each other. And before I get into the numbers, I just want to say, a lot of the earlier polling that was done on the recall, the polls that the media pointed to, say, back in March, February, January, they were polling registered voters, or they were polling voters who had voted in the last presidential election, so a very high turnout. And we knew all along that the turnout would not be anywhere near that in a recall election. Historically, recall elections come in at 60% or under, sometimes way under that. That's just the nature of them, because there's nothing else on the ballot. A lot of voters don't bother voting in recall elections. Well, that's to our advantage. And the recent polling that's been done, and you can go to the next slide now, Tim. The most recent one was by the Los Angeles Times. And that shows a dead heat within what they call the margin of error. It shows 47% of voters right now, likely voters they're dealing with, are supporting the recall, and 50% are saying no. Three, only 3% left undecided. So what that tells us is that there are very few voters left who don't have an opinion of Gavin Newsom or of the recall, which means it's going to come down to who votes. Now, if you go to the next slide, Tim, I'll show you how that compares to the other polls we did. Our own poll, which is the one in the middle, the one that we paid for, showed almost identical numbers to the LA Times poll. 46 to 50 with 4% undecided. Emerson College, which polled recently, they polled registered voters, and you can see the registered voter number is down a little bit, but still within pretty close to the margin of error on both, on both numbers. So these polls all pretty much confirm each other. But one thing to keep in mind is when we did our polling, and when the LA Times did their polling, they pulled a sample that was representative of the voter registration currently in the state of California. Okay, now, we know that Republicans are much more motivated to vote in this election, and this is a voter registration of people who responded in our poll. You can see Republicans, 84% support the recall. Democrats, 24%, so a quarter of Democrats. That is Gavin Newsom's base vote. That base vote is crumbling under him right now. And then almost half of independents are supporting the recall right now. That's another very bad sign for Governor Newsom. Now, we want to get that Republican number up to 90. It's important to be close to 90 on that, and I think we're very close to being able to do that. We want to maintain that independent number at 48 or more. And if that Democrat number stays at 24 to Gavin Newsom's, he's finished. Because we know that Republicans are much more motivated to vote in this election. Every, all the polls indicate that. And that's why you've seen Newsom changes advertising in the last few days from positive ads about California roaring back to ads that are meant to scare his base vote.
To smear tactics.
Yeah, and they're scare tactic. They're trying to screw them into voting. They're making them fearful of what's going to happen. And that's what he's, that's what you're going to see all the way through to the end now from Newsom, because if his voters don't get out, he loses. Now, in our own polling, we asked voters to grade Newsom on a whole series of issues. And these four issues are the issues that he gets the worst grades on, failing grades, F grades on. Crime, homelessness, gas prices, and cost of living. Voters are angry about the state of crime in California, and that's getting worse every day, and that's why you hear Gavin Newsom all of a sudden having press conferences on crime. They're angry when they see the homeless camps increasing everywhere. They're angry when they fill up their gas tank, and they're angry when they realize that their kids can't afford to buy a home in this state, and they're going to have to live somewhere else. But those four issues are fundamental core issues that Gavin Newsom is getting failing grades on. And that's key to how, why his numbers are so poor in our polling. You go to the next one, Tim. Now, on the COVID issue, and I think you saw it in one of those news clips that was played earlier, on the COVID issue, he's getting a passing grade. So they're pretty much split on the mask mandates voters, and they strongly support vaccinations. These are not issues that are helpful to our campaign at this point in time. The voters that are concerned about them are already with us. We need to focus on those, back on those core issues that we just went, went through in our campaigning, on both of our committees. You go to the next one.
And as, as Tim is going from slide to slide, Dave, I just want to give the people that are listening, you know, there's a select few that are listening right now, but there's going to be thousands that listen in, you know, over Facebook Live and YouTube as we go forward. And you're no slouch. You have been in this game for quite a long time, and you are a very credible source of information. And you've been involved with, you know, the bringing ballots to, or bringing propositions to ballot for quite a long time, the gas tax and many more. Give us, just give us a little peek into the insight as to what Dave Gilliard has been involved in, in this state, and just what, you know, what you've been doing, because you've been championing causes for our, our great state for a long time behind the scenes, but you really have been behind the curtain. And, you know, tell us a little bit about you.
Sure, yeah. Thanks, Orin. Yeah, I think maybe we should go back to the other recall election, the Gray Davis one. That campaign was a campaign that I was in charge of back in 2003. And that campaign, in many ways, was very similar. Now, the media will tell you this is completely different than Gray Davis, but in fact, our polling back then was very similar to what we're seeing now with Gray Davis. We knew, once we got to signatures in that campaign back then, we knew that we had a very good chance of recalling Gray Davis. It didn't have anything to do with the candidates that were running. If Arnold Schwarzenegger had decided not to run in that election, we still would have recalled Gray Davis, and we would have elected somebody else governor, maybe Tom McClintock, maybe Darryl Issa, one of the other candidates that were being talked about. So the top question on the ballot is the one that is key to all this. I've been involved in these propositions for a long time on criminal justice issues, in particular, on taxpayer issues, involved in over 1,000 polls in over 500 campaigns across the country for Congress, for statewide races in other states and in California. So I looked at these polls upside down, every direction for many years. I am very excited about what we're seeing now, how things are moving in our direction. In campaigns, you want momentum to move in your direction as voting starts. Voting starts in this election in, you know, three or four weeks. Momentum is all with us. Gray Davis has the momentum against, I mean, Gavin Newsom, excuse me, has a momentum against him right now, and it's very hard this late in a campaign to change that. So it's all good news, Orin, and thank you again for the introduction there.
100%. And you're working hand in glove with Ann Dunstmore, Tom DiCaprio, and Rescue California. I just want to give a quick pitch out for Rescue California. Go to rescueCalifornia.org, R-E-S-C-U-E California dot O-R-G. If you want to volunteer, log your name in, and you can volunteer. You can phone bank, you can walk precincts, you can do, you know, text to text, peer-to-peer texting and things like that. They have a myriad of things that you can volunteer to participate in. And we are all working towards the same end, albeit separately and independently, but Rescue California has been a champion of this cause from day one, and we welcome everything that you guys are doing. And this poll that you guys did was very costly. And, you know, Rescue California, as well as our team, we all need the funding in order to move forward and, and make sure that we are successful. Now, our team, we have people, I'm going to be very open and honest with you right now. This is usually very quiet or kept quiet and, and not made public, but we have about $5,000 in the bank right now as far as our discretionary funding goes. Okay? That is not a lot of money to move this campaign forward. Rescue California, our rescueCalifornia.org, and recallgavin2020.com. We both need funding to move this campaign forward. We would like to engage in more advertising, radio advertising, television advertising, materials that we can get back out into the street, yard signs and barber stickers and t-shirts and things like that. And, you know, we are giving this stuff away with a remit envelope, asking people to make a donation back to our organization. But both need your funding in order to move forward. Gavin Newsom has secured $30 million, $30 million for his campaign. This is a David and Goliath moment for California. This is a fight between good and evil, and we desperately need your funding to help fund the fight that we're moving forward. And Dave, thank you very much. You know, move forward with, with the polling.
Yeah, okay. Tim, can you go forward with the next slide? So the other thing we saw is, in addition to his low ratings on some of those core issues, his ineffectiveness on other issues, it's really at the top of voters' minds. The EDD fraud, the fire protection cuts, his water and drought policies, things like that are all hurting his overall numbers and helping us, and so we need to continue to focus on those. And then there's an overreaching kind of issue that Gavin Newsom is trying to deal with, and it's almost impossible for a candidate to, to correct this, especially in a short election. The voters are very aware that Newsom's been dishonest. He's been a self-dealer. He's been a flip-flopper. French Laundry, the mask deals, no bid contracts. We tested all of these things on our poll, and they were all very big issues in voters' minds. The spouse's salary being paid for by special interest, and then just the off-again, on-again rules, which we're seeing again today, and we will here in the next few weeks, probably. All of that is playing in voters' minds right now and creating a distrust of Gavin Newsom. Now, that's really important, because that distrust isn't just Republicans. We already don't like them because of his policies, okay? We don't like him because of his liberal policies, but independents and a lot of Democrats don't like him because they can't trust him. In their own mind, they've come to that conclusion. They can't trust him. They may like his policies, but they don't trust him. And that means they're not going to vote in this election. That's why he's, that's why he's acting so desperate now about his base vote. So go to the next one if you can, Tim. So very few voters are left undecided. We saw that when at the very first slide about with the LA Times poll and our own poll. There's only about 3% or 4% of voters that are going to vote in this election who don't know how they're going to vote right now. That means victory comes from really the nuts and bolts of campaigning, which is GOTV. If we can get out our base vote, which is Republicans and half the independents, and we're right now busy IDing independent voters on the telephone and through texting, we're going to ID those voters that we know are with us, and we're going to get them to vote when those ballots come out, and those ballots come out in the mail to every voter in California. We need Republicans and the key independents to vote those ballots immediately, and we need Democrats to throw them away or lose them on their kitchen table. That's, that's going to be the key to this. That's why Gavin Newsom's desperate right now. That's why you see the advertising you're seeing. You're going to continue to see it. And that's why we are in a very strong position to recall this governor and really make history, not just in California. This will send shockwaves across the country. So, Tim, I think that was the last slide of that. Is that right?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So that's an overview of where we are in the polling and where we need to be as far as the positioning on issues. Again, the core issues are what's key right now. Crime, homelessness, cost of living, gas prices. The more we talk about that, the better place we're going to be.
So, Orin, do you have anything more to say? I know you're a little bit out of.
There we go. I was muted. Sorry about that. Dave, you are absolutely a Californian hero in my mind, in a lot of people's mind. You know, you have been moving the state in the right direction for a long time while people became apathetic and, and basically just complacent in politics in California for a very long time. And I'm sure that, you know, it's felt like you were steering a big ship with a small rudder for a very long time. But we are, we are taking a dramatic turn in California right now, right here, right now. We have one thing in mind, and that is to get the yes vote for question number one. We need 50% plus one to secure this election, and then, and then the people can make their decision on who they feel is the best candidate to replace Gavin Newsom moving forward. Now, I have my personal opinions. I think that the person that replaces Gavin Newsom should have the wherewithal, the skills, and the ability to get right to work, because he's going to have a short. He or she is going to have a short 18-month stint in office, and during that period, they're also going to have to campaign for the 2022 cycle if they want to stay in office moving forward. So, folks, we are not done. The Recall Gavin 2020.com team, the California Patriot Coalition is moving forward, and we're going to take this to the next step. This is not a one-and-done proposition. This is taking California to the next level, and we are going to continue this momentum as we go forward. Recalling this governor Gavin Newsom is just the first step in this process, and we have a lot of work to do. This is a 10-year plan, and we're going to achieve our goals, and we're going to steer California back out of the rocks and into the open water where it belongs. Tim, back to you.
Well, absolutely. And, you know, there's been a lot of terrible things that Gavin's been saying about us in his commercials. You know, this is a Republican coup. This is a bunch of QAnon, and I've never even heard of QAnon until after we've gotten into this recall. And I've been all over the political spectrum as far as my voter status has been, and we have some wonderful people that are Democrats and Berniecrats, for that matter, that are, you know, helping us out and strong behind our recall.
Absolutely. And I'm going to give everybody a peek under the tent for watching the show tonight. You're going to get a sneak peek as to what we're doing right now, right here in this recall. Tomorrow or the next day, we're going to be filing an objection to Gavin Newsom's divisive and hateful rhetoric that he's been spewing all over the airways, and we're going to, we're going to stop him in his tracks, and we're going to derail his effort to stay in office. And that, that's just a sneak peek. You're going to hear about it. Stay tuned. There's more to come.
Well, that's really, really good to hear. Yeah, because I was on the phone with a young lady earlier today out of the Los Angeles area, and she's Democrat. And, you know, completely behind what we're doing. And in fact, that's where one of the videos came from, which I'll probably be sharing in our Facebook groups and Instagram group to, you know, in support of us. Because what Gavin's been doing has just been completely wrong across the spectrum, and with him going out there doing all those picture poses and stuff, he should have been cleaning up California since day one of getting in a office. You know, right now, we have some terrible fires going on in Northern California due to Gavin Newsom's neglect. And I was on the phone earlier today, seeing what we can do to get some help up there on our end.
100%. And Dave, I really appreciate you joining the Town Hall tonight. Thank you so much. God bless you, my friend, and let's, let's move this thing forward and get the job done. We have a, you know, 50 days left until the election, and ballots are going to be going out in the next couple of weeks, so we need to get the word out and start spreading it as far and fast as we can. People need to vote yes for one. I heard rumor just the other day that Gavin's team is actually distributing t-shirts that say no on Gavin, no on Gavin. Okay, that, that's misleading. And I understand, we, we want, we all want no on Gavin, but fact is, they're distributing those shirts to Republicans and other people to dissuade them from checking the yes box into saying no on Gavin. We need people to remember, you need to vote yes in order to remove him. No, we'll keep him in office. So we want to make sure that people know how they're voting, be well-informed, and, and stay tuned. So Dave, thank you very much for joining the Town Hall tonight. God bless you, my friend. And Tim, who's our next guest?
Well, we have Ms. Lovely Susan Heard, our state administrator with the recall. Well, one of my immediate, what I would consider a supervisor. Susan's been wonderful to work with. Definitely a pleasure. Susan, what are your thoughts?
I have some questions. I'm receiving a lot of calls about AB 9 and AB 10. And are our hands tied on that? I know it went to the Senate. It was produced by the Senate. And is it AB or SB?
It's SB.
SB 9 and 10, and the Assembly passed it. Now what?
Well, I have to say that the only source of information that I have on SB 9 and 10 come from Kevin Kiley, because, you know, we're close associates. As far as I understand, they voted for amendments to those bills, but they have not made it to the Senate floor yet, where they can be voted on in order to be passed or not. So there has been no vote in order to pass them on to the governor's desk so he can sign them. Now, this is, this is for people that are unaware of what SB 9 and 10 are, this is a restrictive, this is restrictive legislation. It's a power grab from the state, taking the authority from local municipalities, cities and counties, and their zoning districts, and turning that over to the state level to where the state low-income housing requirements or their high-density housing requirements will be imposed on local municipalities without their having any say in the matter whatsoever. I am categorically against SB 9 and 10, and I think that we need to restore the power to the people and keep local zoning in the hands of those, those mayors and the planning commissions and things like that down at the local level, and I adamantly against the state takeover of local zoning ordinance.
Right. Um, the other question is Newsom's new mandate that all state of California employees be vaccinated or undergo weekly testing?
Good Lord, you are, you are testing my ability to respond to that without using the profanity or any. My blood pressure just goes up when I hear that, and Gavin Newsom is overreaching and overstepping his authority yet again, and I think, I think that we just got a whole bunch of new votes in favor of this recall based on, based on what this asshat has imposed on state employees. And I don't care if you're a state employee and you got the vaccine. That's, that's fine. That is your choice. And I am all for, what's that?
And that's what it's all about, our choice.
It's, I am all for personal choice, making an informed decision, and I would not back a candidate who thinks otherwise. Informed, decision, personal choice, freedom of, you know, medicating. And, you know, folks, HIPAA was enacted in order to protect people from this very thing that they're imposing on society right now. HIPAA was legislation. HIPAA was legislation that was put forward to protect our right to freedom. And medical choice and, and to avoid public scrutiny. And I believe it was put in place. To, 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 to protect people that were infected with the AIDS virus or HIV. Uh, and, and to protect them in employment areas where, you know, that could be made public or et cetera, et cetera. Now you have municipalities, local cities and things like that, uh, Orange County. Enacting vaccine passports. And the governor, if, if you, if you're not vaccinated, then you're going to have to wear a, a badge, a scarlet letter. Or something to that effect to show people that you are vaccinated. And if you're not vaccinated, then you're going to have to be tested. And then you're going to have to show proof that you're tested in order to go to work.
So Oren, can you imagine all the Cal Fire employees? On these fires, some of them are out there at least three weeks at a time. So are they supposed to go on their 24 hour off shift to get tested somewhere locally? I mean, this is every week. And here's another thing, which I don't see how he can do. I wouldn't put it past Newsom in his way to push people to get the vaccination. To have to pay for the testing themselves.
Well, they're, they're, right now they're paying people like the, uh, circulators that we used, um, to gather signatures. And they're paying them $12 a test to go around and test people. And they, they literally, they're going from homeless camp to homeless camp to homeless camp, testing people. Because for every viable test they get from an individual, the state government is paying them $12 for that test. So, a- and that's just over and over and over again. It's just a misuse of our taxpayer funds.
Wow, that's something else. Um, Susan, really quick, anything else that you're hearing, um, before we introduce our next guest?
Our surprise guest with a, with a surprise announcement.
Bring him on.
So I really want to know, Oren, did you guys lose a bet? I mean, why does he not long, no longer have his mustache and you have one? What, what's happening here, guys?
You know what? Mine is just a short shave away from disappearing itself.
Well, let me introduce our next guest. Uh, he actually works for the Dylan Law Group. He's been behind the recall a hundred percent since, uh, day one, if I recall correctly. Let me introduce to you the great Mr. Mark Moisier.
Mark Moisier.
Hey, everybody. Good to be here and good to be, uh, encouraging everybody that we are almost at the finish line. I mean, Oren, I believe you got started clear back in February of 2020. Uh, you have been, you and Mike have been hard at work on this for a long, long time. For those who don't remember, uh, as it said, I'm a attorney with Dylan Law Group. Over the course of this same period of time, we have brought 22 lawsuits against Gavin Newsom. For his violations of people's constitutional rights. We have gotten about three Supreme Court decisions, uh, regarding churches. And just last Friday, we actually got a decision that Gavin Newsom violated the constitutional rights of parents. To be able to send their children to private school. So, uh, we have been hard at work at the Dylan Law Group fighting in the courts. But every single day I'm getting tons of people contacting me, whether it's by social media, whether it's by email, text. Whatever. Asking me, what can we do about masks or vaccines? Or whatever the latest tyrannical move that Gavin Newsom has come up with. And what I remind them is courts are not quick. Courts are not quick. The fastest way to restore our liberties and freedoms in California is on September 14th. To vote yes on the recall. That is the absolute fastest way. I was on conversations with attorneys today where we were talking about, uh, particular COVID litigation. And we were laying out strategies for the next three, four, five years. It's going to take years in courts to unwind this mess that Gavin Newsom has done. But a constitutionally elected governor can overturn all of this with a stroke of a pen. Because Gavin did not do this through the legislature. He did this through executive order. That means that on day one, on September 15th. The new governor can undo all of this. So if you don't want to have vaccines. As a work requirement, get rid of Gavin Newsom. If you don't want the state telling your local government what they can zone, what they can't do. Vote yes on September 14th. If you don't want your kids wearing masks at schools. Vote yes on September 14th. I can go on and on and on and on. Now, another question that I get asked all the time, as I'm sure you do, Oren, is who am I supporting for the recall? And my answer is this, I am supporting yes on the recall. Because we do not even get to question two unless we get to 50% plus one vote on that first question. And we cannot afford to be sitting here in circular fighting squads saying, my candidate is more holy than your candidate. Or my candidate is more conservative than your candidate, or my candidate has more experience than your candidate. We all have our favorite candidates. But the ballot is sacred. It is secret. And that's where my vote is going to be. Because we got to get past 50% plus one. And we cannot afford for somebody to say, you know what? My candidate is not pulling the best right now, so I'm not going to vote. No, we gotta get past 50% on that first question. Because otherwise, what is Gavin going to do on September 15th if we don't remove him from office? Is he, is he going to go back to saying you are essential and you are not? Is he going to come back and say, you know what? Because of the, the Delta variant, the gamma variant, the Zelta, the Omega. I don't know what, what he's going to come up with next. You know, is he going to say that because of these forest fires? He's going to move everybody out of Northern California and put them all in the streets of San Francisco? I don't know what he's going to do using his emergency powers. And yes, we, the attorneys at the Dylan Law Group are going to, would fight that every step of the way. But why fight that in the courthouse? On September 15th? When we could just remove the, the, the tyrant on September 14th? And so that is my position right now, that the focus of everyone should be not to get in a circular firing squad. With somebody because they are supporting a different candidate. Instead, everybody needs to be focusing on the number one issue. Yes, on the recall. Get rid of Gavin Newsom. And here's the deal, you need to go to your neighbors. And you need to make sure that they turn in their ballot and that they of course vote yes on the recall. How, you know, what are we expecting? And Dave, this is probably would have been a better question for Dave, but what are we going to expect? 20, 30, maybe 40% turnout? You can do more for this recall by simply going and knocking 10 doors. The 10 doors closest to your house. If we have a 30% turnout, that means seven of your neighbors are not voting. And by simply going and knocking those doors, you are going to exponentially increase the turnout in your neighborhood. Where your neighborhood went from maybe 30% to 90%. And if you do that, you have increased the voter turnout 300 times. And that's what we gotta do. We gotta turn out our votes. And if we turn out our votes, Gavin is gone. Gavin is gone. And whoever is replacing him understands the power of the people. And that's where we got to get back to where the politicians fear the people. Where the politicians understand that there is a limit on their powers and that limit is called the US Constitution. It is called the California Constitution, that, that, those documents are not mere suggestions for a politician. They are a requirement. And if you violate people's inalienable rights, you're gone. And that's what's so important about September 14th. And it's not just Oren's job. It's not Mike's job. It's not Dave's job or Tom's job or Ann's job or Mike's job. It is every one of us duty, job and responsibility. To make sure that we have knocked on the 10 doors next to us and make sure that they're going to vote yes on the recall. And make sure they turn in their ballot. And if everybody does that, we are a long ways closer to Gavin being gone. Now, some of the, your listeners are overachievers, Oren, I have been told by some pretty good sources. And I bet you, you're going to have some people who 10 doors is not enough. I bet you, you're going to have people who are going to knock on 50 doors. And I bet you, you have some very super patriots in your group that probably will knock over 100 doors. But if everybody did just 10 doors, you know, 2 million people signed that recall. And if 2 million people knocked on 10 doors, that's 20 million doors. There's not going to be 20 million people voting for this. But if we, the people who took the time to sign the petition. Simply go out and ensure that their neighbors are voting. We're going to get to 50.1. And then we get the privilege of seeing Gavin gone and somebody else who's accountable to the people. Somebody who understands that the constitution is a limitation on their powers. We are going to see somebody who's with a stroke of the pen can start getting rid of all these terrible things. That Gavin Newsom has been doing to our constitutional rights. Now I could go on and on and on about lectures of our constitutional rights, but I'll save that for the judges. And just remind that all of the people here, that for the, you know, I, I have been fighting in the courthouses for your. To protect your constitutional rights. And yesterday I happened to pull papers that I'm now running for United States Senate. And so I want to now start representing you guys at the US Senate. To protect your constitutional rights.
Wait, what, 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 what? You, you snuck that in kind of quietly. What, 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 what did you just say, Mark?
I said that I pulled papers to run for United States Senator. Uh, that's currently being held by Alex Padilla. But the thing is I've been fighting for you in the courthouse. Now I want us to fight for you at the US Capitol.
Mark Moisier, US Senator, folks. God bless America. Holy cow, that is amazing. And, and I am so proud to, uh, to have that announced here on our show. And, uh, uh, I think we cannot go wrong with you in the Senate. I, I'll tell you what.
Wow, that'd be fantastic.
We got a lot of people here who have done a lot of hard work. So a lot of patriots have proved that we can win a recall against Gavin Newsom. And you know what? We're sending a nest, a message across the nation that California has not lost. That there are a lot of sound individuals who understand the principles of liberty and freedom. And this is not going to be a one up election. We are going to build upon this for 2022, 2024, 2026 and beyond. And we are going to take our state back because we are going to put politicians in who are accountable to the constitution. And more importantly, accountable to we the people.
And we're, and you are going to be one of those politicians that we put in. And God bless. Thank you so much. And you know, Mike, Mike Neder and I. We just were involved in a circular firing squad with the, uh, the Los Angeles Times editorial board. And one of the debates that we had during that conversation was, well, uh, you know, Oren Healy. You know, whoever we vote in is going, going to replace a governor with less than a majority vote. And I told him, no, you're wrong. The majority vote is 50% plus one. And the people that vote yes on the question number one. Are looking at the list of candidates that there are running for governor. And they have unequivocally voted yes on one stating that. Anybody on that list is better than this governor that we have in office right now. So the majority of Californians are going to vote to remove this governor. And then, yes, that gives them the ability to choose from this list of fine Californians. Fine Americans and patriots that are running for governor. And I'll tell you what, folks, it is a lie that this is a Republican takeover. As a matter of fact. There is nearly half of the candidates that are running. For governor are not Republican. So how do you make a case that this is a Republican takeover? A California coup that we're part of the right wing extremists that, that participated in the insurrection back at, uh. You know, January 6th, when nearly half of the people that are running for this office. Are not even associated with the Republican Party.
Well, I could tell you this, as an attorney, I have conversations with liberal attorneys all the time. People who have actually helped, uh, Gavin Newsom with his fundraising, who are telling me they're not supporting this recall. Not one bit. They are, you know, they, they are done with Gavin. They're tired of their.
Well, they, they are supporting it or they're not supporting it.
They are supporting the recall.
Got it, got it.
They're not supporting Gavin Newsom, even though they've donated to his campaigns in the past, they are not supporting him. They are voting yes on the recall.
Yep. And I'll tell you what, folks, uh, listening to this call right now, we have until August 6th. To file our objection to Gavin Newsom's divisive and, and hateful rhetoric. As far as his statements that this is a Republican takeover. So take this down, folks. Grab a pen, grab a notepad. My personal cell phone number is 916. 761. 2312. 916 761 2312. If you are a Democrat, if you voted for this governor, I want to hear from you. And we will take your statement down, add it to our case as, as background or supporting documentation. To, to show the courts that this is not a Republican takeover. We have sworn affidavits from, uh, lifelong Democrats that voted for this governor. One who actually named her son Gavin. She was so smitten with them back in the day. And, and, you know, these are people who support the recall. And do not subscribe to Gavin Newsom's extreme socialist agenda that he's, uh, you know, forcing down our throats. His, his, uh, controversial sexual education curriculum. His signing of the, what's known as the quote pedophile bill SB 145. You know, his mass release of prisoners, 20,000 prisoners released over the last, you know, umpteen months. And, you know, his closing down of our California Department of Corrections fire camps. Closing the Susanville State Prison where the inmate fire crews were once housed. Because this governor in his short sighted misjudgment. Released those prisoners who once staffed our very robust fire crew. And we no longer have that as a viable resource in California. He's closing these fire camps. He's closing the prison where they were housed. And he, you know, the, the California taxpayers are having to foot the bill for his misjudgment. Because, uh, you know, he just announced the other day that he is increasing. The, the budget of Cal Fire by $2 billion, $2 billion with a capital B. two billion with a capital B. And that is to replace, not for fire prevention as he painted it, but that is to replace the resource that he eliminated because of his mismanagement and his short-sighted judgment. Mark, back to you.
Well, as we're coming close to the end of this town hall, I wanna go back to what Mark was saying, that anybody can get involved doing the door-to-door. We have some wonderful graphics that you can find on Recall Gavin twenty twenty. You know, go to Take Action and find that D Y I downloads. Um, contact your local county coordinator that you can also find on Recall Gavin twenty twenty. Susan, any final words before we come close to an end here?
Um, no, other than, excuse me, good luck, Mark. We are behind you all the way. And vote yes to Recall Gavin Newsom on September fourteenth. That's it.
Mark, any final words before we close out tonight?
September fourteenth is just around the corner. Don't, don't become an eighty-year-old person and say, remember back in two thousand twenty-one? I wish I had done more to get rid of Gavin Newsom because of all the stuff that he did after September fifteenth. Let's not live in regret. Let's do what we can over the next couple of weeks to see that we do not have to live in regret for the rest of our lives.
Mark, is there a website or a, a resource that people can go to for your, your candidacy?
Uh, they can go to www.markmoisier.com. That's M A R K M E U S E R dot com. But you know, as much as I'd like people to go there and make contributions and sign up for my email list, go there and put the email, sign up for my email list, but save your donations until after the recall. Before then, go to Recall Gavin twenty twenty and make your contributions there because that's where the money needs to be spent right this minute.
And God bless you, Mark. Thank you very much for joining us.
Yes, God bless, Mark. Thank you. Orin, any final words before we end?
Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, don't forget to join us on Friday from seven PM to nine PM on Friday night at the French Laundry with Mike Neder, Orin Healy and sous chef Eric Early. Um, you can listen on kabc dot com or look in our email that was sent out this morning um, to those that are on our emailing list, um, for the Zoom link. And you'll get involved in the chat. It's actually quite fun getting involved in the chat as I see a lot of people chatting in this Zoom here. So, um, if you're not on the email list, go to Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com and sign up to get on the email list. All right, anything else, Orin?
That's it. Good night, everybody. And we'll see you on Friday night.
All right. Good night, everyone.